... Chair. Vice Chair Pasiak.
Here.
Chair Merrick.
Here, thank you. I'd like to move to item four, which is for a consideration of possible action to approve the July third, two thousand and eighteen regular meeting minutes. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes? Anybody have any questions, corrections, or discussion?
I, I do. It said vote passed eight to zero. Is, am I reading that correctly on a number of items?
I don't have them.
There's only seven commissioners.
I'm, I also have a question. I also have a question about Wells Geary. Did he actually sit on the panel that night? I know he's an alternate.
I would have to check, I'm sorry. That means if he...
We were all present on that.
Right. That would be a question that I'd like to have also checked out.
He's just listed as an alternate.
He may have been at the meeting as, as an alternate, which is fine, but that may be where your eight, zero vote came from. Cause he's listed as
He wouldn't have voted though.
Present. He would not have, but that's where it could possibly have come up, come about.
We'll check that and correct that.
Alright. Any other comments? Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes along with the corrections.
I'll move.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to item five, staff reports. Alex.
Chair Commissioners, good evening. Just a few updates. We have a, we just got two new applications for rezoning cases. That makes eighteenth and nineteenth of the year. So, we're well over what we had last year. I believe last year we had twelve zoning cases throughout the whole year. So, these items will come before you. I believe in October, November. I believe by December, we should be hitting the twenty mark, a little bit, probably twenty-one to twenty-two if we're lucky. Other than that, we've had a few projects coming through feasibility. There's one that's in between feasibility and technical review. Scooters is the name of the company. It's a coffee company. They're looking to locate north of State Route eighty-nine and Center Street, across the street from the high school. We have another one that's about to go through feasibility on another restaurant, but we're not there yet, so we're not gonna name any names as of right now. Other than that, that, that's it for right now.
Thank you, Alex. Okay, we'll move to item six, the public hearing. There's item six A and six B. I would ask the commission to entertain moving item six B forward of six A. Does there anybody have any problems with that? Okay. Thank you. So, we're gonna move to item six B and hold item six A to proceed after six B. Item six B is consideration of possible action to approve ordinance eighteen dash eight fifty-three to rezone six acres of real property located on the northwest corner of South Road One West and West Road Two South at nine forty, South Road One West from AR five agricultural residential, five acre minimum to SR one, single-family residential, one acre minimum. Alex.
Chair Commission, before you, you have an item. Applicant, Mr. Cool. Mr. Naki is the representative of the, of the application. He, they have a plan and requested to rezone the property. Property is located on the northwest corner of South Road One West and West Road Two South at nine four zero, South Road One West. As you can see, this property is located on a, on a major intersection. Property is currently six acres. It has an AR five zoning district. And it is currently vacant. There's a accessory structure on the building, sorry, on the property right now, but I believe that, that's planned to be removed anytime soon. But as it, as it stays right now, there's no improvements on the on the property. It is currently vacant. As you see here, here's the zoning map, as stated before. The property is agriculture residential, five acre minimum. The applicant has submitted a request to rezone the property to single-family residential, one acre minimum. To the south, as you can see, that's part of Yavapai County, which is an extension of the subdivision that you see to the north, that is Angus Acres subdivision. To the west, you also see the Chino Valley Cemetery. To the southeast, you see Wagon Wheel Ranch subdivision. So, as you can see, this surrounding property that does support the same zoning district that the, the applicant is requesting. And when we say, when, again, when we're talking about zoning districts, we're talking about strictly focusing the single-family residential or to one acre lots make sense in this specific lot. And that's what we're looking at. And staff believes that the, the zoning district to the southeast and to the northeast support the type of zoning that he's requesting. As we see here, we're also seeing a pattern of low-density residential transforming into medium-density residential as properties start getting smaller in this area. The property, the, the current zoning district and the proposed zoning district are in conformance with a land use designation that's shown as medium-density residential on the Chino Valley general plan. As you guys have reviewed your staff reports, there's a comment made by, made by Public Works. Usually when Public Works request additional right-of-way, we do that through the zoning. If, if we don't ask it through the zoning, as a condition for zoning approval, we're, we're not gonna get the, the right-of-way. So, this is the easiest way to do that. The Public Works Director has requested that the applicant requested, dedicate, my apologies, dedicate additional right-of-way, twenty-five feet on Road One West and thirty feet on Road Two South. The UDO states that major materials, the right-of-way width needs to be at least a hundred feet in, in width. And we're requesting this, the additional right-of-way in order to meet this request by the UDO. So, staff recommends the planning and zoning commission forward to town council and approval of ordinance eighteen dash eight-five-three to rezone the property from AR five to SR one with a, a condition stated before. The applicant is here. If the chair of the commission have any questions, of myself or of him.
Does anybody have any questions for Alex while he's up at the microphone?
Alex, where's the water line and sewer line in this area?
Chair Bacon, you caught me off-guard. I don't have my, my utility maps, but I believe Mr. Mulberry is walking towards over here. He deals with utilities, so he might be able to answer that.
If you can help me, where is the Mobile Home Park in relation to that?
To the north.
So, the furthest south are, oh, sorry. If I could answer that, Frank Marbury, Public Works Director. The closest the, the sewer is, is to the Mobile Home Park up to the north on One West. Mountain View Mobile Home Park entrance to that is as far south as our sewer goes.
So, the wagon wheel.
And we have water nowhere in the area.
So, they're allowed to have wells on one acre lots?
That's up to the state, but yes.
Okay. That's on the hill.
The property that's just to the west, that has a manufactured home that was brought in and set down, have questions about the setback from it in the property line? When they subdivided that, is it a legal setback?
No, the, that building that's currently there, and you're, you're speaking about this manufactured home that's there. When they came in for a, to subdivide the property, they submitted what is called a record of survey where they need to indicate all existing buildings, and they clear ten to, the ten feet setback.
Ten foot?
I thought it was twenty.
No, side setbacks are ten feet on a...
But that's the front of the house on that end.
They, the front of the, the front is determined by which way it faces the road.
Okay, not where the front were.
And I apologize, actually, you're, you're correct. It's twenty feet, cause it's the main structure. But it does clear twenty feet.
Okay.
I have just one question for Alex. Just for, just wanna make sure I understood. You're asking for a dedication along South One West of twenty-five feet into the property line and along Road Two South, twenty-five on the north side of the road, right?
Thirty feet and twenty-five feet.
Thirty feet on the Two South?
Give me just a minute. We're talking about twenty-five feet along Road One West and thirty feet along Road Two South.
Just so I can clarify that, what that would do is take it fifty feet from the section line on those roads is what we're looking for there to comply with the UDO. Since this, there's no subdivision, it's a lot split situation if they decide to split in the future. That's the way to get right-of-way to conform with UDO when you're not in a subdivision.
Any other questions? Would the owner like to come up and speak, please?
Chairman.
When you come up to the podium, please, I'm sorry. When you come up to the podium, please state your name.
Chad Nanki. So, I'm representing the, the, the owner of the property for the rezone application.
Okay.
And so, yeah, just, I think, just answering questions, I think the setback from the one home to the back of that property, the, the subject property is twenty-five foot.
So, it does meet the legal setback requirements?
Sure does, Chairman. So, and most of the, it splits access will be along south. If there is future splits along South Road One West is where the access into any additional one acre parcels will probably come from versus the long Road Two South. So, there won't be any ingress, regress off that busy, busy road there is the idea.
Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Nanki? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, so, would like to open the portion of the meeting up for the public to come up and speak with, on this item of six B. When you come up to the microphone, please state your name. We'll give you about three minutes to tell us what you think. Would anybody like to come up and speak about item six B? Okay, seeing no volunteers, we're gonna move past the public portion of the meeting. Any discussion or questions that the commission has about this project? Okay, then I would entertain a motion. Okay, Gary, lead into the microphone for me, would you please?
Mr. Chairman, I move to thank you. I move to recommend approval to town council of this request to rezone approximately six acres of real property located on the northwest corner of South Road One West and West Road Two South at nine four zero, South Road One West from AR five agricultural to, uh, AR five agricultural residential, five acre minimum to SR one, single-family residential, one acre minimum with the following conditions. Condition being right-of-way dedication sufficient so that the ultimate right-of-way line on Road One West is fifty feet west of the section line between sections twenty-seven and twenty-eight. And the right-of-way dedication on Road Two South should be sufficient so that as to set the right-of-way line fifty feet north of the section line between sections twenty-eight and thirty-three.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, we're gonna move forward with item six A. Possible consideration and possible action to approve ordinance eighteen dash eight fifty-two to rezone seven point zero six acres of real property generally located approximately nine hundred feet east of Sycamore Vista Drive and six hundred and thirty-eight feet north of West Center Street from AR five agricultural residential, five acre minimums to SR one, single-family residential, one acre minimums. Alex.
Chair Commissioners, before you, you have an item from property owner and applicant, the Gempys. They have requested to rezone their property, similar rezoning, AR five to SR one. The property is generally located approximately nine hundred feet east of Sycamore Vista Drive and six hundred and thirty-eight feet north of West Center Street. As we see here in the site map, we have a subdivision abiding the subject property, Mesa View South subdivision. We have Molly Ray Estates to the southwest and Chino Valley Estates subdivision to the southeast. Property owner also owns a property to the south. They own this portion here, and this is where they reside, and, and this portion here. A few years ago, about ten to twelve years ago, they bought both properties as they are. Property owner has decided to pursue a zone change in order to rezone the property to SR one. Property currently is seven, about seven acres. There is no improvements on the property right now. They use the property for their farm animals. See here, the zoning map. The property is agriculture residential, five acre minimum. The properties to the south are the same. Properties northeast are also the same, AR five. Other than that, everything else is SR one, including this big lot that's right here to the, to the, to the east. So, again, we're looking at it as, does this zoning district, the SR one zoning district, does it, does it make sense to be on this specific lot? Can we see single-family residential, medium-density in this lot? Subject, the subject property and the, and the the general plan ma, uh, land use map is medium-density residential. So, the SR one zoning district is in conformance with the, with their request. If you guys were able, if the chair and the commission were able to review the staff report, there's a detailed report about the neighborhood meeting. The cit, the applicant went through the citizens' review process. They notified everybody within a three-hundred-foot radius, resulting in eighteen letters. Other than that, they notified the general public through the newspaper and an onsite sign. The neighborhood meeting was conducted on August twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. At said meeting, there were about, give or take thirteen residents. Most of them reside in Mesa View, the subdivision to the west. So, we're talking about many of the neighbors that are abiding the subject property along this way attended said meeting. They raised two issues were the main issues. You also have received the letter. There was a resident from Mesa View South that wasn't able to attend, but wanted to voice her opinion as well. If, if the chair and the commission were able to skim through that letter, it's basically the same issues that were brought up during the, the neighborhood meeting, which were drainage issues and manufactured homes. If the chair and the, and the commission were able to drive through the site, they were able to know that this property is elevated. If you were living in any of these properties and go to your backyard, you will see that the property has an upward slope. So, that being said, when it rains, obviously, the natural runoff goes to their backyards, which has become an issue for them. At said meeting, the property owner explained what she was trying to do. The developer, who also is, who is here, and the audience, was able to speak to them. They, what they, what they expected, they wanted, they wanted to do, they have right now, currently, they have a, I believe it's a thirty-five-foot easement, give or take, going along the west property line to give legal access to the subject property. The developer stated that he will further extend that easement. It would take a turn over here and go here to the midpoint. And that they were gonna subdivide the property into three separate properties and put manufactured homes in each one of them. Now, again, I remind the, the commission and the chair that if, if we're talking about manufactured homes, that's not a zoning issue. The UDO, we stated this, gone through this several times, that UDO does not regulate over site-built homes or, or manufactured homes. We're strictly looking at, does the SR one zoning district make sense in this specific lot? As far as the drainage, I asked Frank Mulberry, the Public Works Director, if he could at least touch on that. So, we could get that covered. But from from the applicant's request, staff believes that the SR one zoning district does make sense because we have a larger lot to the east. That is SR one, we have similar lots surrounding that that are SR one. If they go through the proper develop, through the proper channels, that's doing the, the proper lot split, and they go through the town, submit building permits, as far as the grading and draining, they'll all get covered through, through that process. But the staff recommends of the planning and zoning commission forward to town council recommendation of approval for ordinance eighteen, eight-five-two to rezone this property from agriculture residential, five acre minimum to single-family residential, one acre minimum. The chair, commissioners have any questions of myself, of the property owner or the developer? They are also here.
I, I have one question, Alex.
Yes, Commissioner, Pasiak.
Looking at what you gave us.
Yes, sir.
It appears what you're showing on the screen is that there's going to have to be a right, I think you're gonna see a lot split in order to get this rezoning.
That's correct. I touched based on that. There's a thirty-five, thirty-five-foot easement here. What their intention is to, to do a lot split, split it into three. We're talking about five acres, split that into three. Each one will be about an acre and so.
Okay, but, but what I'm saying is that this little white building that you show here on this, on this plan, you show the property line, uh, south of it, and then the next one you showed, the property line was north of it. Yeah, there.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay. So, I'm saying that there has to be a split in order to get that property, get that house.
Yes.
And, and then, then the other five acres.
Yeah, the property, the property line should be along here. It seems that there's a crease around here, a fence line, and I took that to be the property line, but you're right. The building gives it away that the property line is actually here.
So, the next slide is the proper configuration.
Right, that's the correct property line.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. That's, I just needed that clarification.
And thank you for clearing that up.
Anybody else have questions for Alex?
Alex, on this twenty-five-foot easement and going up to the said property, I try to make it a habit of going and looking at the piece of property we're gonna deal with. I don't know about the twenty-five foot, but that's a dirt road with a lock gate on it, where no access to the property right now. If we're gonna go through with this, I'd like to at least meet with the property owner and have access to go back and look at that property. Also, the water is a concern to me.
Mr. Chairman, I also have a few questions. Alex, is it a twenty-five or thirty-five-foot easement?
It is, uh, it is more than twenty-five. I believe it's either thirty-five or thirty-seven.
Okay. Second question. Which, what property does that easement serve? Is this property already split with that little house owner, or is it not split?
Commissioner Bacon, give me just a minute, let me get my... The record of survey shows that it is a twenty-five-foot easement.
Okay, does that easement extend only to that separate property?
That easement strictly serves this back portion, this back lot.
And so, it'd be also with a property where that little shed, that shed is, correct, also?
Well, the shed is still within the, the front property abiding Center Street, so no.
All right, just to clarify some confusion here. The shed itself is attached to the property that is the main property with the house on it, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That was an error that I made on my part based on the fence being like, right here.
Okay, so the, so the, that easement line that you have your marker on now actually should be forward, there you go.
Right, so it should be about there.
And the easement that goes up the side of the property goes all the way up to this back piece of property and stops at the corner?
It stops right here where the property starts, where the back property starts.
Okay, and then your intent is to go sideways to the middle of the property and then back?
The, and the intent is to go, turn here, to the center, and up here.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that.
Alex, I have another question. And I'm basing my understanding on five years ago, so codes may have changed, but even where I worked, twenty-five-foot easement was allowed to access one property, not to access multiple properties. Each property had to have their separate easement. So, that's the question I'm asking you. If this is gonna be a land split, is twenty-five foot a legal access for more than one lot?
That's, uh, what is, what we will call the, right now, the code, as it states, it states fifty feet. At the time that they did this lot split, it requested twenty-five feet. I'm not exactly sure if, I would have to tal, talk to Development Service Director and even legal counsel to see if, if we can request an additional twenty-five on the property that's abiding Center Street. But right now, I can't answer that question.
Well, my understanding is when they, when it was split, whenever it was split, twenty-five foot would have been legal for one lot. If they're going to develop it and subdivide it further, they're gonna have to provide sufficient right-of-way for those multiple lots, whether it be for a tract or a land split. It has to meet the, and I believe the minimum requirement is fifty-foot right-of-way?
It is fifty-foot right-of-way. Like I said, when they, when they execute the, the lot split on the, on the subject property to, to the top, we are gonna be requiring fifty feet. But your question is, shouldn't the one in the bottom be twenty-five? And, and my answer is, I don't know if we can request an additional twenty-five. That would have to be something that would be discussed with Development Service Director and even legal counsel. I don't know what the parameters are.
Well, the question is, is that twenty-five will serve one lot, but they would have to get an additional fifty feet all the way to, uh, twenty-five feet all the way to West Center Street. And that's a technicality. So, you cannot serve through an easement, a subdivision, and then go to fifty feet. My concern is this subject property is landlocked. They'll have to wait, if they want to subdivide it, even land split it, until the property to the east further develops and... and legal access was provided to the subject property just for splitting. They have legal rights to build one lot on that pro, one house on that property, but to split it, they're gonna need fifty-foot access, in my opinion. Now, I don't know what the current code is or current state laws. I'm basing it on my experience of four or five years ago, and I don't know if that's changed, but I'm just bringing that to your attention. Okay.
I just wanna, I wanna make sure I understood what you were saying. So, he's, Alex is acknowledging the fifty feet, once we go north on the property, that they want a lot split. But, and they already have twenty-five on the southern part of that gentleman's property. You're saying he would have to give up another twenty-five there to make it fifty all the way through?
No, he would have to, if he would like to continue that easement north, uh, to access the subject property, he could do that. But, to split it, I don't see that's possible for only twenty-five feet.
No, what I, what I guess, what I'm saying is, well, and he needs to add twenty-five more feet. He's already allocated twenty-five foot easement that's existing today, is it not, Alex?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so he would need to allocate another twenty-five, and he's already conceding the fifty up above to make it fifty all the way through?
Are, are you saying, uh, increasing the width to twenty-five or increasing?
This unit right here.
Yes.
He would need to add another twenty-five feet to this easement in order to match the fifty in the back.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, that is if the, uh, adjoining property owner is willing to give that up.
Well, maybe the owner of this property would be willing to give up fifty instead of twenty-five.
Yes.
It's, it's the same owner.
Oh, okay.
As I've been, as, as you've stated.
And, and my question, again, is, I don't know what the process of that is. If we, if, if, because it's legal non-conforming easement, if, if they're allowed to continue splitting it, or if us as staff need to ask for an additional twenty-five on that south lot?
Well, let me clarify it then. Uh, if that's the property owner and he gives twenty-five foot, uh, he can dedicate the twenty-five foot, make it fifty feet then, and then have legal access to those lots in the rear. And my question is, even with that legal access to the lots in the rear with an easement, the property owners on that project, property can split their property as well to make one acre lots, if they wish, and if it meets, uh, the land split requirements.
If they have, if they have the zoning?
Yeah, well, they have the S, they'll, they'll have one acre zoning and he's splitting into three lots, seven acres, so they'll be able to split their individual lots further.
If it meets all the development standards, yes.
Yes, and so, the question is, is that, uh, road gonna be paved or not paved? And, uh, these are the questions that are coming up in the back of my mind, uh, for the future. And I think that should be addressed.
When it comes to lot splitting, unless it's in the U D O, we can't require somebody to, to pave a road. So, if that's something that, as a commission, you wanna, I mean, we're, uh, as you guys know, as a commission knows, my apologies, we're rewriting the, the U D O. If that's something that, 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 as a, as a commission, you, you wanna put down in, in the U D O, feel free to do so, but it needs to meet state regulations as well.
So, do, uh, do we have SR, we, two-point-five zoning, correct?
We do.
So, do we have two, two acre zoning?
Yes, we do.
So, and instead of giving one acre zoning, we could make those lots, uh, the appropriate size for what they plan on splitting?
Commissioner Bacon, the applicant has requested SR one.
Yes, I understand that, but I'm saying, this is the alternative. If, uh, either the commission would like to recommend a change of zoning or recommend continuance until we get further information and not make a decision tonight.
The, the application is, uh, is to rezone the property to SR one. Either the commission can deny it or approve it. And then, they'll have to come back, resubmit with a new zoning district.
Let, let me ask a question here. Right now, we have a twenty-five foot right-of-way to go back to what, what is going to amount to a fifty-foot right-of-way, so that, to me, is a problem. Or a easement, I'm sorry. So, if the owner would be amenable to give up another twenty-five feet to create a fifty-foot right-of-way to connect with the, um, easements, to connect with the other easements, then why would that be an issue?
That wouldn't be an issue.
Okay, so that could be a question we could put to him tonight when he gets his opportunity to speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because right now, I don't think that it makes sense to have a skinny road feeding a fat road, to put it as simply as possible. Okay.
May, may I make one comment?
Go ahead.
This is with the caveat that we need to have a fifty-foot easement. Maybe twenty-five, after its research, maybe twenty-five is adequate for three lots. I don't, I don't want the owner to say, I'm gonna give up twenty-five more feet when he doesn't have to.
Right, especially, we, a- again, we're talking about a, a zone change here. I don't think we can ask for an additional twenty-five foot easement.
I think, I think what we-
While we're talking about zoning and not lot splits.
Right.
And, and I agree with that, but if, the question would be not that he would do it tonight, but if it was a requirement, would he be amenable to doing that?
Right, I think what we need to do is, at a staff level, is, is Development Service Director and myself talk to legal counsel to see if, if he wants to, if they wanna pursue with a lot split, would that require an additional fifty feet? Or are we considering it a legal non-conforming easement and just, and they pursue it forward? That's gotta be something we've gotta talk to legal counsel about.
Yes, go ahead.
You said there was a question about flood control on this lot?
Yes.
Did that looked at, and how was that addressed?
I'm gonna give the time over to Development Service, uh, Public Works Director about that.
I, again, Frank Marlberry, Public Works Director. The issue with the drainage, I apologize, I was not at the neighborhood meeting, so I'm not fully aware of any specific issues that may arise. Uh, like Alex said earlier, in general, the subject property is at a higher elevation than some of the surrounding properties, so the water drains from higher to lower. And, uh, in general, in Arizona, you follow the, the law or, or the policy. Uh, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm trying to find the right words. But typically, drainage follows the natural and historic patterns, and you have to accommodate those natural and historic patterns in your property. So, that means if there's a creek or a wash that's coming from the property that's uphill from you, you cannot block that water from coming onto your property. And the, and you cannot release that water at a greater rate than is natural and historic to the property to the south of you. That's why subdivisions have detention and retention requirements to do that. In general, the state has some guidelines, um, and our municipal code is not very clear on non-subdivided lots, but the state in general has, uh, guidelines that, of course, the local jurisdictions have authority to change those guidelines. But, the state guidelines tend to exempt, uh, residential developments, uh, one acre or less in size. Um, no, one acre or greater in size, I would think. So, um, and then, there's, there's three different exemptions that they recommended it, it, from the state standards. Um, but again, those are just standards, and local jurisdictions have the authority to modify their code as they see fit. But, in general, you have to let the guy uphill from you release the water on you at the natural and historic rates. Um, and that typically becomes a civil matter at that point.
So, as it sits, as vacant land, the water that flows off of it can be impeded. But, if it's divided in future development, when they come in and start to put pads in, to put houses on, will engineering address flood control at that time? About where that water's going, if it has to be kept on that property?
Our, uh, sorry to interrupt, but, uh, our code typically, if it's not in a subdivision, does not, at the building permit level, does not, um, regulate retention requirements for individual residential lots.
I have a question for you. This Mesa View South subdivision, that's a platted subdivision with its own drainage requirements when it was done, do you know?
I haven't looked at the exact drainage, uh, report for that subdivision, but in general, a subdivision has a drainage report done for it that both quantifies the historic and natural drainage flowing into that subdivision, including any off-site flows and any onsite flows, and then accommodates the increased runoff created from the building of streets and, and housing structures and impervious areas, and detains that water to historic rates so that it doesn't impact the downstream properties any, at any more than historic rates.
So, the subdivision grating and drainage plan should have something in it that deals with the water that comes off of this property onto the subdivision property? Am I correct?
If it, uh, it should at least mention that it receives some flows, and typically.
And maybe-
If it's a small amount, it may not mention it specifically.
Without you researching the subdivision's drainage and gr, gr, grading and drainage, you don't know what the requirements would've been at the back pieces of these properties to deal with the water coming off of the vacant land.
Hmm, not at this time, but we can research that and find out if those documents have any of that.
Okay.
If that's the question.
Because in setting up that subdivision, they knew that property was vacant and water came off of it, so it would be the responsibility of the civil engineer for that project to deal with that water in some fashion or another. Because the P, he can't stop the water from coming off the hill. Traditionally, and I'm repeating what's already been said, it goes on at the same point and it goes off at the same point in the same amount that it always has. That's the real simple version of it. And so, if this subdivision was platted by a civil engineer, there should be something in his work that pertains to the water coming off of that hill.
Correct. You can play with it inside the property before you subdivide it, but you can't play with it on either side.
Right.
In layman's terms.
I see some questions that we don't really have good answers for here tonight. And we could make a bunch of stipulations here, which may or may not need to be made, and the main one being this twenty-five foot easement. I just question whether it's, it's a good move to try to move forward with this or put it off to next month's meeting and have them come back with some of these questions answered.
Mr., Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Correct me, this isn't a planned development.
That's right.
So, it's, we're, we're, we're evaluating whether going from SR five to AR five or SR whatever, uh, one, AR, AR five to SR one is the appropriate. When it comes down, correct me if I'm wrong, Alex, but if we have any issues, any issues coming up with drainage, development, easements and all that, the city's gonna be dealing, the, the staff are gonna be develop, uh, putting the controls in place and ensuring, uh, compliance with those at a later time. Am I, am I wrong about that?
Well, the, the, my concern is that we've given the zoning to this, which I don't disagree with, by the way. I think it's perfectly a good thing to do, considering almost all the land around it is a single acre zoning. But, if we zone that and then the right-of-way was not big enough to deal with however many pieces of property were back there, then we're stuck with something that doesn't work. And I just feel that we've had enough of that around here over the years. And so, I'm wondering if it isn't in the best interest of everybody that's involved to get these questions answered, especially about the right-of-way. The drainage, I do not have too much of a concern about, because again, the drainage coming off that hill should've been dealt with the drainage in the subdivision that surrounds the hill, plain and simple. The drainage is also dealt with at the building department level. It's not our job here to set any drainage standards for anybody. We're just a zoning commission, we're not engineers and we're not building department people. But, to me, the main sticking point is, we've got a twenty-five foot easement or right-of-way going into a fifty-foot, and to me, that just sounds like bad business.
And if I may, to, to reiterate, Alex, from a staff perspective, as Public Works Director, I would like to take the time to consult with legal counsel to make sure what we do is legal, because when you go back and ask for someone extra for something that was done in the past, there may be some sort of action as far as evaluation of the property that is way above my head as an engineer getting into legal areas that we would probably rather make sure we're asking the proper professional to, to give us some advice on that.
I mean, i- i- if it was a property owner voluntarily giving up another twenty-five feet for the easement, that'd be something else, but if we're putting that as a stipulation for approval for a zone change, it has nothing to do with zoning, now we're trading deep turf right there. So, I think, uh, the, the commission wants to do a continuation on it and bring it back in October. We'll have those answers for, for the commission.
I just, I'm almost gonna insist that we do that, and I'm gonna ask somebody on the commission to make a motion for that, please.
And make a motion that we table this until next month?
Second.
Development to come back and give us answers to these questions.
Specifically, the question would be, is the twenty-five foot easement sufficient to feed the subject property if it's split in three or four or however many pieces it eventually gets split into? Or does it require more? And if it requires more, is the property owner willing to dedicate more to the town based on the requirements of the code?
Mr. Chairman, I also have another question, is that he's asking for SR one zoning with the intention that this property, the three subject properties that are made, can be split in the future. And so, I'm looking at, these property owners come in and say, we'd like to have our street paved. When are you gonna do it? Oh, we gotta float a bond issue. Oh, well, wait a moment, isn't the developer supposed to pave streets? And I'm thinking, well, it's like, well, we're just, this is not, the intent of good planning is to plan for the future. So, if he wants three lots, I would say, I'm in all favor of giving him two-point-five and two-zero zoning because that's what he wants. But, if he intends to make these lots made into further land splits in the future, then I think the improvement should be in for, for a paved street. I think that's only fair.
Mr. Chairman, you have a motion on the floor.
You need a second.
We need a second?
I seconded before.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. All right, so, we're gonna just, uh, take a vote on this motion? All in favor of continuing us to the next month's meeting?
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Okay, so, we're gonna move this forward to next month. Okay, so, moving to item seven, non-public hearing action items. I don't believe we have any of those. Any discussion items from the board of the commission? Okay, so, we're gonna go to item nine, which always seems to cause huge confusion. This is the portion of the meeting where the public can comment on anything except the stuff that's on the agenda tonight, 'cause we already dealt with all that. So, if the public would like to come up and speak about certain things, please do so. You got three minutes, state your name, be polite and be concise. Nobody's interested, we're gonna close the public portion of the meeting. I would entertain our favorite part of the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.